Welcome to Ocean County Focus. I'm Donna Flynn, your host. Joining me today is Ocean County Commissioner Barbara Jo Kray. And also joining us is Tony Agliata, the Director of the Ocean County Planning Department. We're talking about programs and services that affect many, many people here in Ocean County. Thank you both for being here today. Thanks for joining us. The Planning Department, I think sometimes, is maybe a well-kept secret within Ocean County. However, they oversee so many key programs, Commissioner. And the ones I really wanted to talk about today are really those that affect people that want to buy their homes, want to buy their first homes. They want to need a little bit of help with rehab in their housing, a little bit of assistance. And maybe you could just give us a general overview of how this benefits the residents of Ocean County?
Thank you, Donna, and thank you for having me here today. One of the things I think that we forget about or neglect to think about are those people who are just on the borderline of need. And they are those people who maybe need some rehabilitation in their homes, people who need some assistance in buying their homes, people who need some assistance in paying for their homes. And that is what Tony's department is able to do and able to provide through the grants that they've received. He will talk specifically about the different grants and what they do. But I think when you look at the people that benefit by this, it is allowing these people to be in their own home, on their own, and living a life that they would like to live.
And is there really anything more? Well, you know, one of the most important things that we can have is to provide people with a roof over their heads.
Yes, right. Exactly.
You know, when we talk about some of these programs, Tony, and there is a host of them, and I know that you've been involved with implementing them for a number of years. The first one that I wanted to chat with you about is the First Time Home Buyer Program. I remember when the county actually launched this a number of years ago. You now have over almost 570 people or 570 families that you've assisted. How does this program work?
Well, it's a great program, Donna. And again, what's more better than having a program that's able to get people into their first home? So again, you know, the program is basically modeled of, you know, very simple. Again, you have to be a person of lower moderate income. Again, you have to have, study employment history, decent credit. You have to have about 1.1 and 1/2% of your own money for down payment and closing cost assistance. And again, basically, it enables somebody to go out and get their first home. But again, remember, we supplement the funding as far as everything is concerned. We provide about $10,000 in down payment, closing cost assistance. We're not the bank. We work with a number of area financial institutions. And again, in an effort to get everybody into their home. So again, we work with a nonprofit agency, Ocean Inc. They administer our program for us. And again, everybody that goes through the program has what we call pre-counseling, which we talk a lot about first time home buyer, getting into your own house. We talk about credit. We provide credit repair type of mechanisms to assist people because maybe somebody is going through the program initially and they just don't have enough to get forward or their credit has a couple bumps in it. But we help to repair their credit and so they can get into their first home. But one of the key elements of it is not only do people are able to get into their first home, but we provide post counseling. So we all get into a house. We're in the house for a couple months, something breaks. So what we try to do is teach people how to really establish a budget to plan for these type of things. But again, Donna, when you think of, you know, well over 500 people have benefited from this program, and when you talk about success, that's the American dream of getting into your own home.
Absolutely. I mean, when you're talking about, and many of them, they're families. So their mom and dad and children and stuff. And again, so often, and the economy plays such a big role in a lot of this too, where so many young families, I think, starting out, look at this, and they look at homes and they're like, we can never do this. But this does provide you, this does provide them with the opportunity. What do you, what do you say to that?
Now, I was listening to what he was just saying, and oftentimes, the, as you say, the younger generation comes out of college or comes out of school and doesn't have the income that would be necessary to be able to afford the houses. And some of them are, you know, a little bit more than what they can afford, yet they may or may not have a family and they need to, they need to start. But one of the things I think that the programs that Tony has, and especially the one he was just talking about, is not only what it will do today, but how it will help them for the future. And I think that that's very important. So they can maintain the house and they can maintain their life and build it for them and their families and their children.
What about, you know, when Tony had mentioned, this isn't, it's not just the county that does this, but there's a lot of partnerships that are involved in this. What is the importance of those partnerships, Bobby?
I think that, I think that it's very important as people realize the different organizations that become a part of that, that the buy-in from different organizations help the people to move forward. And I think that the obligation or the recognition, I'll say that, I don't want to use the word obligation, the recognition of that helps the people to realize that there are the different programs helping them to move forward. It's just not the county, it's other places. And I think the people who put together the other places and the other organizations have a sell or a buy into what we're doing. And I think that's important to them too.
Absolutely. Tony, another one of the, before we leave the First Time Home Buyer Program, how do I tap into a program like that if there's a family out there that's interested? What do they need to do?
And again, we have, you know, the partnership with Ocean Inc. So again, we have information online that, you know, indicates everything about the program as well as a pre-qualification and application. So again, what somebody would do is fill out the application, submit it to Ocean Inc. And then again, then we schedule housing counseling sessions throughout the year. You know, again, in an effort to accommodate everybody and to make everything work. But as the Commissioner said, when you look at government working with financial institutions, working with a nonprofit, that's a partnership that works very well.
Sure, sure. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the Housing Rehab Program also. You know, houses get old, things break, roofs need to be replaced and stuff. How does that work?
Well, again, Donna, we have, we really have two housing rehabilitation programs funded under two separate elements of funding provided by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. But in essence, both of them are the same. What we do is we go into owner occupied houses and we correct. It might be safety issues, handicap issues, or just particular code violations. So this might include putting a handicap ramp into somebody's house, a handicap bathroom, roof windows, heating system. And again, overall, combined with both programs, we've probably helped out in excess of 1,000 residents in Ocean County.
That's great.
So again, it's been a great program, particularly as far as people that are lower moderate income that need additional really improvements or code improvements to their dwelling.
Do you see a lot of seniors tapping into these programs? I mean, for like a housing rehab program?
We have a lot of seniors. And again, we know we get, you know, we spread our funding throughout the county, obviously, again, but we do see a lot of seniors taking advantage of this program. And again, it's a good program. We have an administrator that runs our program. We have information on our website that provides a little more information about, you know, some of the qualifications associated with a program. But again, what a success when we can look at over 1,000 people that are helped under this program.
And what do you consider the greatest benefits of a program like this?
You know, I was sitting here thinking about what he just said. And when you think about someone who's living in their house and all of a sudden perhaps a roof leaks or a pipe breaks, and they say to themselves, what am I going to do? And now, all of a sudden, you realize that there is help out there, that someone can help you. And for those people who may live alone or have a limited income, there is help available and there is help through the county. And all they have to do is apply and qualify. They don't, we were talking about this yesterday. We don't build swimming pools, but we do.
Right.
We don't build swimming pools, but we do make it so that people can enjoy and continue to live in their home safely. We're there to make sure that you're safe. As he pointed out, ramps for people who may need handicap access and things like that.
And we're actually going to take a quick break. And we're going to be right back here on Ocean County Focus.
The Ocean County Board of Commissioners, working to make Ocean County a better place to call home and a special place to visit. The Ocean County Board of Commissioners encourages residents to recycle right with information from their all-new educational guides. This information provides guidelines for everyday recycling as well as how to dispose of bulky and potentially dangerous hazardous waste. This information is available at every municipality's town hall, library, recycling center, and at the county connection inside the Ocean County Mall. The Ocean County Board of Commissioners, working to make Ocean County a better place to live and a special place to visit.
When it comes to getting around Ocean County, Ocean Ride is ready to serve you. Hi, I'm Freeholder Gary Quinn. Ocean Ride is a service of the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders that provides a host of transportation alternatives to Ocean County residents. If you need to get to a doctor, if you want to take a trip to the shopping mall, or if you rely on public transportation to get to work, we have the solution for you. For more information on Ocean Ride services and bus schedules, call 732-736-8989, extension four, or visit our website. Try Ocean Ride, we'll get you where you need to go.
Welcome back to Ocean County Focus. My guests today are Ocean County Commissioner Barbara Jo Kray and Tony Agliata, the Director of the Ocean County Planning Department. Tony, when we went to break, we were talking about programs that fall under the Federal Home Program or the funding from home. One of the acronyms that is often heard, or the CHODO, or I have to go to my notes, I'm sorry, the Community Housing Development Organizations. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. Donna, as you said, the CHODO, the Community Housing Development Organization, falls underneath the Federal Home Program, again, sponsored by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And what they do as far as this funding is we're mandated to provide a 15% set aside for any of our home monies that we receive. So annually, again, it could range from $200,000 up to a half a million dollars. And again, what we try to do is we work with local nonprofits. We qualify local nonprofits as community housing development organizations. Again, nonprofits that have the pursuit to build affordable housing. And specifically, we gear all of our funding towards affordable rental housing. So again, in turn, we've built, we've probably spent about $9 million total as far as the development of affordable rental housing. We work with nonprofits including Homes for All, Ocean Inc., Joan, Ocean Housing Alliance. And some of the bigger projects we've done, we've done Dottie's House, Joan Valentine's House, Hope's Crossing. So again, a lot of good work has come out of this. But another type of element is what we do is what's called scattered site housing rehabilitation. So throughout Ocean County, we have went in, in a neighborhood and rehabilitated or built a house where a lower moderate income person could benefit and have a place to live.
Commissioner, I believe we, and stop me if I'm incorrect with this, but wasn't there just an apartment group that opened up for veterans? Did that fall under the CHODO also?
That's correct. And that's under, that was in Pine Beach, again, where we had six affordable units that were specifically geared towards veterans.
Right, right. So when you, when you hear about these programs that, you know, that Tony's office helps to let a flow through funding and that sort of thing, what are your thoughts about, you know, being able to provide housing for veterans?
Oh, that is incredible. There are so many people that are, so many veterans, I should say, that are in need and we don't even recognize them. And I think that this kind of, this type of housing is so well needed, so well deserved. And there comes a time, and it's through this funding, that we are able to provide it. Honestly, I wish we could provide more.
Right, right.
But there just isn't always that opportunity. But when it is available, we will be there to do it.
I mean, and actually, some of the other examples that Tony was talking about too, Dottie's House, which helps, you know, women, women and children, and the Joan Valentine House, which helps people that are challenged or in need. I don't think people realize that a lot of that money is provided through Ocean County.
Ocean County, yeah. Especially with some of the programs that I'm involved in, I see this almost daily. And I'm so grateful that we have the opportunity through programs that such as Tony's department is able to fund and to do, that people who don't realize that they are available and they should. I wish they could, and I'm hoping that we can get the word out more, only to be able to have them have a better quality of life.
Sure, sure.
It's so important.
I mean, because really, at the end of the day, that's really what your, what government is all about.
And that's what Ocean County hopes to do.
Tony, when we talk about the CHODOs too, does that fall under Community Development Block Grant or is that a separate program that you guys administer?
It's a separate program because again, we're responsible for obviously the home program and also the Community Development Block Grant Program, the CDBG. That also comes from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the CDBG program is kind of, kind of unique where every entity around the country has the ability to design a program based on their specific needs. So for example, in Ocean County, we provide money for housing rehabilitation. We provide money for public services. So the Providence Houses, the Ocean Inc., the Interfaith Hospitality are all able to get some additional funding, federal funding, in an effort to help them with some of their administrative and operating costs. But again, in turn, we also benefit from the program by allowing the municipalities to tap into this funding. So again, in turn, the municipalities might use this money for handicap improvements, park and recreation, sidewalks, drainage, again, depending on what each municipality's need is. But again, across the board, what really makes, I think, the CDBG program unique is it probably has touched almost every resident in Ocean County. Because you might be walking down the street, going up a curb cut, or going to the beach and walking up a beach ramp. And chances are, that money has come out of our office.
Right, right. Barbara Jo, when, as Tony's talking about CDBG money, as a former mayor of Little Lake Harbor Township, what benefits did the town find with this sort of program?
It was amazing. We were able to do, we were able to do handicapped accessibility to our community center. We, as Tony pointed out, we were able to do curb cuts for people, especially people with handicapped and wheelchairs and things like that. We were able to do sidewalks from the community center to a neighborhood so that the children could access, get over to the community center, do improvements to our community center so that the children could, or anyone who wanted to play any of the games or whatever, they could do that. There was an awful lot of work that was being done in the town, and it still goes on.
Sure.
And now, as a Commissioner, I'm able to bring that to 33, or 32 other, because there's 33 towns. And now, I'm able to bring that to 33 other people, 33 other towns.
When you guys, I mean, it's a process that you go through every year for this funding, correct? Can you walk me through the process a little bit?
Yeah, you know, again, typically, again, our allocation is based annually on a formula allocation. So it's based on low and moderate income areas, population. And again, we're able to get an allocation, you know, each year from HUD. But what we have to do in turn is we have to develop what's called an action plan, a plan that has to be in conformance with the federal guidelines and submit it to HUD, approved by the Board of Commissioners, submitted by HUD for review and approval. So again, you know, the process takes several months, several public hearings involved. But again, when you look back at the CDBG program, it's been around since the mid-'70s, in Ocean County since the mid-'80s, and really arguably, one of the more successful domestic programs in history.
And we're actually going to take another quick break. And we're going to be right back here on Ocean County Focus.
The Ocean County Board of Commissioners encourages residents to recycle right with information from their all-new educational guides. This information provides guidelines for everyday recycling as well as how to dispose of bulky and potentially dangerous hazardous waste. This information is available at every municipality's town hall, library, recycling center, and at the county connection inside the Ocean County Mall. The Ocean County Board of Commissioners, working to make Ocean County a better place to live and a special place to visit. The Ocean County Board of Commissioners, working to make Ocean County a better place to call home and a special place to visit.
And welcome back. When we went to break, we were chatting about Community Development Block Grant funding and federal monies that come into the county that are, that flow through the county. Basically, and the county really sets the priority for how the money, you know, the money goes in, you know, comes in and goes out. One of the funding allocations that the Planning Department will be working with is American Rescue Plan Act money of about $5 million. And you're looking to use this for homelessness services and other services. So Tony, I wanted to start with you, and maybe you could explain where that money's going to go, the distribution of that, of those funds.
Sure, Donna, you know, again, and this is, again, additional money that came down from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So again, you know, it kind of coincides with the county's ARPA funding. But again, it's an additional element that's specifically geared towards, again, low and moderate income residents and homelessness type issues. So again, at this stage, we're in the process of developing a plan. The plan's going to consist of a few elements, but predominantly, money set aside for affordable rental housing production as well as supportive services. You know, again, so we're looking to submit the plan sometime in the early part of the spring with approval sometime, you know, hopefully by the fall, and hopefully being able to get the money out on the street by, you know, the latter part of 2023.
Right. And Commissioner, I'm going to go back to some of, some of what we spoke about a little bit earlier, that certainly the partnerships that have been developed by the county will benefit or will be a big benefit to the county when it comes to this sort of funding.
Absolutely. Under this program, the money, the funding is there, but it will be the partnerships that will be able to implement them and be able to provide the people with continued homes, housing, and things like that. Because it's very important. Once you're in your home, you want to be able to stay or be able to have a roof over your head.
Right, absolutely.
And that's very important to us. And through the programs that he's providing or working with, that we'll be able to do that. And they'll be, the partnership is most important.
Absolutely. And I'm thrilled that we were able to chat about all of these very important programs that come out of the Ocean County Planning Department. And while I have you both here though, I'm just going to flip a little bit to a little bit of a different subject because I know you're both involved with the Ocean County Recycling Program. So Commissioner, do we have our shredding program and our household hazardous waste programs coming up?
Very soon. I'm very excited about that because it is something that has continued to work and they do a marvelous job. Tony's department has set up the schedule for this year's, and the household hazardous waste is remarkable because it enables us to clear out our homes, clear out the things that we're not going to use, and do it safely. And of course, the shredding is most important. If you have documents that are of importance, that you don't want to have just thrown in the trash, please take them and put them, come to the shredding department, the shredding opportunities. And those can be found on the website for the Times. There's, I think, eight or 11?
We have, we have, I believe, six household hazardous wastes coming up and about 15 document shreddings coming up.
Okay, there you go. He has the numbers. But anyway, if, and it actually, I went to a couple last year, and it was interesting to see how they just unload your car, put it in the shredding machine, and it's gone. And it's safe. So you don't have to worry about anybody going through your trash and picking up anything that would be important to you, old tax returns, whatever the case may be. It's a very important, and it's open to all Ocean County residents.
Tony, I wanted to touch base with you a little bit about recycling numbers and stuff from 2022. Again, the county had a bit of a bump in the road, as did everyone, when it came to recycling and what to do with it. How is the program faring right now?
Well, again, the first half of 2022 was a record-breaking, you know, the county profited about $1.9 million, which again, was the most in the history of the program. You know, again, as we move forward, unfortunately, the program kind of flattened out a little bit. So, you know, we didn't see really a return in the, in the second half of 2022. But overall, again, we had, we did have a great year. Again, we did make a significant amount of money. We were able to give some revenue back to the towns for the first time since about 2017. So that alone really contributed to the success of the program. But as we're moving forward, really, the county, we really have positioned ourselves well. You know, again, the county, particularly the Board of Commissioners, have invested over $7 million into the facility. And again, we're at a position now, we're able to, really able to adapt to market changes. And that's really where we need to be because again, the market continues to fluctuate and we need to be in a position where we're not only producing a clean product, but where we're able to sell our product down the road.
Right. And Commissioner, why is it important to invest in this program?
I think for several reasons. I think for, not only environmentally, I think that's very important for us in order to preserve the environment for the next 27,000 generations. But I think also financially, it benefits the community, the county, because as Tony pointed out, if there's, we're able to sell the product in a way, we can return the money back to the communities, at which point they can invest into their recycling efforts and then do, collect more and do more, and we just, it's sort of continuing. And I think also too, that people have, people really want to do this. I think people have an interest in it. And it's just educating them as to the right way to do it.
I think for a lot of people, it's almost second nature after a while.
After a while.
I mean, we all have our two, have our garbage can, and then we have our recycling bins.
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess it was also a big help too, when you guys increased the amount of materials that you were collecting. Because then this way, more of my garbage actually made it to my recycling bin, I saw. So that, you know, so that, that seems to have worked out great.
I don't know if all towns do, all towns do a single stream, I don't know, but that sort of made it easier too. Where you didn't have to separate everything. And so, in our, my hometown, Little Lake Harbor, we have a single stream, so it makes it real simple to do.
Well, definitely, the recycling program over the years has definitely morphed, if you will, from, you know, I recall, again, newspapers, magazines, you know, plastics and that sort of thing. So we have, our equipment though, has all been able to handle all of this, but you still run into problems at the recycling centers. And what causes your biggest problems at the recycling centers?
I think we have two problems that we can talk about. One is just, you know, plastic bags. Second one would be lithium batteries. And again, and the third problem is going to be some of the debris that gets put into your recycling container that really shouldn't be recycling.
So a bowling ball should not be recycled.
So, you know, again, first we start off with the plastic bags. The plastic bags, people continue to wrap their recyclables in plastic bags and they throw them into the recycling bin. It gets to our facility, and unfortunately, these bags get jammed up into the system and they stop the system. And again, there's times that we have repairs that may take two or three days. And what ends up happening, the material keeps coming into the site, but we can't process it. So again, that causes material to be outside, that could get, could get wet, but also minimize the value of the material. The second item is lithium batteries. As the Commissioner just said, we were talking about document shredding. Unfortunately, last year, we had, one of our sites got shut down because there was a lithium battery that caught fire. And again, it damaged the truck, the shredding truck, and it caused the facility, you know, to shut down for the day. But that also causes fires, unfortunately, in our facility, which again, we have a number of small fires throughout the year. We're able to handle them and put it out, but the damage that it could cause, you know, could be very, very well significant.
Absolutely. Commissioner, we have about 30 seconds left. What's your message to the residents of Ocean County?
My message to the veterans of Ocean County is thank you for your service. God bless you all. And my husband was a veteran. And I think about the fact that, and for those people who have active veterans serving now and their families are here, there's a message that I want to give to them. Those who wait also serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you both for being here today. We both, I really appreciate it. And thank you for joining us here on Ocean County Focus.
The Ocean County Board of Commissioners, working to make Ocean County a better place to call home and a special place to visit.